Just an announcement. I think this is the largest crowd we've had in here for this kind of event. I would also encourage you all to buy tickets for the Tivoli Lakes Players so we can duplicate this. We have just a self-serving announcement. We have shows coming up, March 1st and 2nd, so I think there's still tickets available. Please, buy your ticket and show up and support the residents of Tivoli Lakes in their entertaining programs. And the 24th... Yep. Yep. The Events Committee will have another announcement later. Okay, let's get started. Myra's here so we can begin. Hello? Okay, first thing, please silence your phone. Call to order, this is a regular meeting of the HOA Board of Directors. Present, Don, yes, Jerry? Jay? Sharon? Howard? Robert? And Mark? Okay. That being taken care of, the first and only item of business is the presentation of the front entrance. First of all, can you all hear me? Okay. I will be going through a few preliminaries. Then we're going to turn this over to Bill Reeve, who's the landscape architect designer. And then a few more announcements, and then we'll open it up to the public for questions to the board. After Bill's presentation, if you have any questions on the landscaping, Bill will be pleased to answer those. The Board of Directors is pleased to share the final designs and special assessments for the renovated front entrance to Tivoli Lakes. This meeting is being recorded, and along with a survey, will shortly be available on our website for our residents to review, along with the 3D renderings and other exhibits. The Board is asking all residents to review the information on the website and to complete the short survey, providing feedback and a preference between two designs and a possible water feature. The survey is to be returned electronically by February 23rd. During this period, should you have any questions or need further information, please contact the Management Office or any Board member. The Board will review the results of the survey at its meeting on February 26th, which will assist the Board in their deliberation and selection of an option. Once this decision is made, the Board will secure firm pricing and have contracts reviewed by our attorney. By early April, we will provide the community with at least a 14-day notice that the special assessment will be voted on at its meeting on April 29th, along with options for payments. Okay, that's just the preliminary. What are the basic designs? Since late 2022, we have worked with several firms on the concepts and received comments from and met with residents and committees in Tivoli Lakes. We thank all of you for your contributions. As previously reported throughout the last year, both options start with the most attractive feature of our entrance, the unusually long gatehouse structure with wings on both sides of the central guardhouse. The design goal is to enhance this feature by physically extending it in both directions by one or two options. One, to enhance this by constructing curved masonry walls on both sides, tapering from a height of 10 feet at the edge of the gatehouse, east and west about 75 feet, down to a wall height of 6 feet where it will meet the front hedge along with extensive plantings. The second option is to accentuate this expanded view using just plantings with a hedge which when mature and trimmed would take the place of the view of a tapered curved wall. Both options will have custom-designed uplighting for the wall and our new plantings, as well as for the royal palms and gatehouse. A small water feature in the center median in front of the guard window is compatible with either choice. The community feedback last year on when it had the presentation of the hardscape concept by PLA was that it was hard to visualize and lacked specifics on the plantings. Everyone did agree that the renovated front entrance should contain colorful plantings similar to that of the replanted median. We now have a complete planting design and better 3D renderings. We are pleased that we are able to retain that same designer who did our median and with which you're very pleased, Bill Reeve of Botanical Visions. I would now like to turn the presentation over to Bill to present the two options. Please hold your questions and comments on Bill's presentation until after he is finished. After that, the Board will continue the discussion along with presenting the special assessment for each. Bill Reeve? You like that?
So I just put my... I just put my... I just put it there. Yeah, it'll be fine. I'm usually so loud, so... I don't get like a Madonna mic? No, it might be a little bit taller than you. Just a wee bit. Yeah, it's fine, that's fine, that's cool, yeah. That's good. Yep, can y'all hear me? Yeah. I've never been told, "We can't hear you," so I'm usually loud and hyper, so... All right, so, yes, I designed the medians that you have now, and what I did basically was take that same exact plant palette, you know, you know, the same trees, the calliandras, the tibachinas, the Hong Kong orchids, the three foundation plantings, and use those same trees at the front entrance. And then, and then a lot of the ground covers and hedges as well, the hedges that are blooming a lot and ones that have color. So what I tried to do was take everything that was used in the medians and then incorporate it into the front entrance, so that way there's a theme kind of. So when you're coming in, you'll see these colors. And then, the cool thing is, as you see these colors in front of you, facing you... Oh, sorry. Anyway. I have to go back to where it was when I used to do stand-up. I did that years ago in college, those days are gone. But anyway, so what I love about your community is, my work of course, no. But when you're driving into your community, one of the cool things that we try to accomplish as landscape architects and designers is to have a multitude of elements to be visible. And so the idea is, when you're driving in, as that Hong Kong orchid grows outward... As that Hong Kong orchid grows outward into the, more into the street as it starts to fill the island, the one before it and the one after it is yellow, it's the bonazias. And so that yellow then, you know, interacts with the purple, so you get the contrast. So the idea is to have these layers. It's all about layers. And so, you know, that's what we like. And so we want layers that are opposing the color wheel. So if we got white, we go red, if we got yellow, we go purple. We try not to do red next to orange, things like that. Although Monet would do it, I won't. But, doesn't look right. But, I mean, you do mushrooms, it'll be okay. But anyway, but, but, just kidding. We'll be handing them out later to... No, so, the idea was, again, take those same elements, those same colorful elements. You know, the Hong Kong orchids bloom all winter long, from about November, December, all the way to May. You guys have been enjoying those for years now. The calliandras bloom year-round, the tibachinas bloom whenever they want to, a couple, a few times a year. And then the bonazias bloom usually once or twice a year, depending on seasonal events and weather and patterns and things like that. But, so again, the idea was to bring those same elements to the front. So, all right, so here... So here, here's what we're doing. I'll take the mic out. All right, there we go. All right. All right, yeah, I'll rim around. All right, this'll be good. All right, so, this is your, this is, you know, this is, this is, this is option one. This is the one with the wall, there's a wall back there, see the wall? Okay. There's the wall. There's the wall, and there's the wall. So what we have here... These are the Hong Kong orchids right here. Oh, sorry. These are the Hong Kong orchids right here. And there they are over there, and that's, you know, those are going to get big. You know how big those are going to get, you see the ones you have, they grow fast. So these guys are going to be really the foundation back there. And then next to it, you then have a bonazia for yellow, a bonazia for yellow, and then the calliandra is down here, pink, and then you have the tibachinas for purple down here. So just there alone, you've got, what, one, two, three, four different colors. And then what we did is, on the wall, you know, we want to show more of the wall, so we kept it open. There's back planting back here. Hold on, I gotta look, I don't have it memorized. Okay. Okay, so this planting here, this one back here is the chrysandra. That's the peach-colored plant you have, it's kind of peachy or orangy. It's a chrysandra, it's also called firecracker plant, but there's another one called firecracker, so I never use that name. But that's going to be the chrysandra, and then in front of that, I've got, I think, Spanish shawl. No, we have spiderwort, we have the purple queen. So we've got purple. So just like you see the yellow next to purple, it's going to be the same thing here, a peachy-orange with purple. This is a purple foliage here. There's this plant, this one right here. Remember, remember Wandering Jew, it used to be a house plant that we all had back in the 70s? Remember the purple foliage? This is the same thing, same family, just a little different version of it. You see it a lot at University of Miami, if you ever go to University of Miami, which I never would, go Gators. But they use it in the medians, Dade County uses them in the medians down in Coral Gables, Coconut Grove, those areas. They're gorgeous, it's just, I mean, they can take a lot of different things, they're a tough plant. So again, you've got, so you've got, you've got the peach-colored orange, and then you've got the purple foliage. It has a little white flower, that's very inconspicuous, you don't, you don't really see the white flower. You have to be on top of it to see it. You're not going to see it from back here. It's puny. And then we have over here the calliandras, which are pink, which are, will be blooming like mad. What's crazy is the calliandras are going to end up being more like an umbrella as they grow, and it's starting to happen on yours. You're starting to get that umbrella shape, you know, like that kind of a canopy shape, almost like a weeping willow, which I love that look. But anyway, so these are the calliandras, and they're going to be blooming pink flowers throughout the whole year. And then, back behind it, again, we have the verewoods, the bonazias, which you guys have blooming right now in your, in your medians. And so, that's there, and then, behind this, on the berms, just to keep the berms stable, we're using just a nice little inexpensive ground cover called macho fern. There's also fishtail fern, they're almost identical. There's just, one has a little split in the leaf and one is a straight leaf, that's the only difference. But they both do the same thing, they'll just, they'll just grow like mad and kind of hold that berm together so you don't get any erosion on it. All right, so, that's going, now, over here, we have, right here, is more of a formal planting. This is, it's one of the jasmineoids. This is jasmine minima. And you see it uses a low ground cover, only gets about that tall. It's just a very low, low ground cover. Doesn't bloom or anything, but it's dark green, it's like a Kelly green almost. And it's, it's very formal, you see it at the entrance of the Polo Club down in Boca, Toll Brothers Project. You see it a lot of times on country clubs, especially leading up to a golf course, they use it a lot. But it's a good ground cover, and you just trim it like once a year and that's it. Oh, sorry. Funny, I'm used to having the little thing that goes around. Whenever I lecture or teach, that's what I get, so I don't have to worry about it, sorry. All right, now, so yeah, this is the jasmineoid. This right here is Spanish shawl, which blooms a purple flower year-round, it's a great little ground cover. You have it in the medians now, in some of the ends. It's got like a purplish foliage, dark green purplish foliage with a purple flower, purplish-pink flower that blooms off and on throughout the year. Another one of those plants, you can just kind of plant it, forget about it, and hard-prune it like once every year or two, it'll come back with a vengeance. It's amazing how good hard pruning helps plants. All right, there's the water feature, right there. We just drew it as a small square with three fountains coming out of it, three little bubblers. About this high off the table is how tall those bubblers will be, just for impact, just for impact. The bubblers will be about that high off the, off the water ground. All right, let's see here. Yeah, where's that other angle? There it is, you can see the angle there, see it? There it is. Now, behind it, we've got the chrysandra, no, no, this is...
Okay, folks, folks, if you please, let Bill speak.
All right, there's no instructions on it, so we're lost. I want to check something, hold on. Now, what we have right there is supposed to be, for some reason, I used a different symbol, but that should be copper leaf. Looks more like chrysandra, well, we can change it to chrysandra, but it's copper leaf, it's that red leaf, you know, that deep, rich wine-red, almost like a burgundy-colored red leaf. And those are going right there. Then here we have Thai plants, cordillines, and so those are purple foliage. So here we got, we got, you know, the purple here, we got the green here, we got reddish color here, then purple back here. So again, a lot of purple and green in here. All right, yeah, there it is, right there, there it is, see, there's the blooms on it, see the little blooms? Great little bloomer, just a great little plant. All right, and then that... Yeah, it's fine, yeah, figure it is. All right, so here's the one without the wall. And like what Don was saying, what takes the place of the wall is this foliage right here, hold on. Right there. Red copper leaf again, red copper leaf again, right here. So that same wall, that curves, that slight radius, is accomplished with this, with this foliage right here. That's red copper leaf, so it could be red copper leaf there. And then in front of that, I think we have thryalis. Yeah, thryalis, yeah. We have thryalis in front of that, and thryalis blooms a yellow flower year-round, and that yellow on that red looks incredible. It just pops when you see that yellow in front of that red. And then in front of that is the tibachina again with the purple foliage. Two tibachina, or, well, the tibachina trees, this foliage down here called Spanish shawl is also called dwarf tibachina because the bloom is the same color and it's very similar. So again, more purple. Purple and yellow is primarily the foundation plantings, from a color standpoint. And then with the same trees up here, the Hong Kong orchids, then we have the, the verewoods coming in between them. For, and again, yellow on purple, yellow on red, and then purple on yellow. Yeah, you go purple, yellow, red, yellow, purple. And more purple. All right, yeah, all right. Here's, here's a good example of them. So you can kind of see what we're talking about, there's the red, that's the copper leaf for going right in there. That's the Spanish shawl. We also got plumbago in here though, too, there's the plumbago right there. Here's the plumbago, we got plumbago in here as well. There's a, there's a row, there's a layer of plumbago in here that goes right in front of the thryalis, I think, doesn't it? I can't remember now.
Just in case you're having a little trouble visualizing this, after tonight, we will, at the conclusion of tonight, we'll have them on the boards behind at this room, on the back corner. And then during the week, we're going to have them in the great room. And then you're also going to have them on our .org website to look at, at your leisure. So while it might be a little tough to visualize it here, you'll have other opportunities.
Yeah, you'll be able to see the actual drawings that we did on, on 24 by 36 boards, just like when we did the median. All right, so, you can see that, there's the thryalis I was telling you about. See the yellow blooms on that? There's the thryalis, you got, there's the plumbago that'll be right in front of it as well. Then you've got copper leaf in there behind that. So it's, it's layers is what it is. So what you're, what you're do, what we're doing here effectively is, when you're driving in, the idea since you're looking forward, hopefully while you're driving, looking forward, you'll see the tiers, you'll see the layers. So you have the grass, which is a tier, believe it or not, it's the bottom tier, which is green. And then you go to the purple of either the Spanish shawl or the, the purple queen. And then after that, you go to thryalis of yellow, a little bit of plumbago mixed in there in front of it as well, so blue on yellow. So the idea is, when you look at this, as you look at it, you kind of, you, you, you move up the palette, the color palette. So it's purple, it's green, and then purple, and then yellow, and then blue, and then purple, and then, you know, red. And then more purple, more yellow. So the idea is to always, the, the goal is also to always have something blooming, always have color at every time of the year. Just like you guys are in the medians now. Pretty much something is always blooming in those medians, there's always color. If it's not foliage, then it's in a, in a bloom format. But yeah, so that gives you an idea of the, see, can you see how it's layered? How it's tiered? Here's, here, this is the lowest tier, the grass, and then the second lowest tier, and then the next tier, and the next tier, next tier, next tier, and so on. The royals is the final tier, going up above. These royals will always be growing out of these trees. They'll never, the trees will never catch up to these royals, these royals get 100-plus. These trees do not get 100 feet tall, any, anywhere. The biggest, they'll get like 30 feet, 35 feet, somewhere around there. But there's the purple queen I was telling you about, right there. And that's the chrysandra up there. There's a bonazia. There's a calliandra, and there's the Hong Kong orchid, that's a young one, but yeah. But yeah. Same, same prolific blooming environment, same. And the good thing is you got nice exposure there. I mean, big full sun environment, so things are going to bloom like mad with that full sun. And so anyway, over here, we let the wall show more, obviously. Here, we don't let anything show because there's no wall. The wall becomes the planting, basically, from a density standpoint. And this is super dense, this is really layered well, very layered, very dense. And, and it'll be, it'll be maintained in a way to where it's trimmed to where each layer is just below the one behind it. And then the one behind it is allowed to grow above the front, in front of it, especially with its blooms, so you can see the, the layering of the blooms. So, I'm sure you get the idea. And then we have a couple of these guys popping out, these are for creas, just for a little contrast and texture. We got a, these are for creas, there's one out front right here. These are an agave-like plant. We have, and we have a few in here. Right in here, just for contrast, just for a little bit of a breakup of that massive planting. I love mass plantings, but sometimes I want it broken up a little bit, yeah?
I think, is there anything else you'd like to go through on this, like we've gone through the slides? This is the, a good comparison of the two options, one...
Oh yeah, this is a perfect comparison.
Upper with the wall.
Yeah, there's the wall, and there's without the wall, so you kind of get this feeling. Obviously with the wall, we let the wall show, we let the wall show more, you know, obviously. And here, we just, we dense it up because there's no wall. So, but we accomplished the same thing, you know, with that curve, we did the same thing here, just in foliage, that's all.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything else you'd like to go through on this, or you think I've explained it?
There it is, there it is there, yeah. But, and of course, we're keeping the big bismarkias that you have, the ones we planted, or I think you guys planted originally here. The two bismarkias will be staying along with the royal palms, and these royal palms stay as well as that bismarkia as well. So these royals and that bismarkia stays as well. Yep, there you go. Can I, can I do questions now, since I'm on this? Does it make sense to maybe do questions right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. What we'd like to do is open it up to questions for you. It might be easier to try and visualize.
I'll point to you with the laser. Yes, yes, sir.
And please stand up and use the microphone.
Oh, let me go give it to him? Oh, it's mics, okay, good.
Test one, two, all right, here we go. I have a couple of questions, not many.
Yeah, go ahead.
A little bit closer.
In the without-wall presentation, how, how do you maintain that at such an expense without, without crushing it? I'm sorry.
You, you, you create pathways, and the maintenance crews do that everywhere.
There'll be pathways there for them to...
Well, yeah, we'll have, there'll be, there'll be gaps in it, like between this separation and this, there'll be like a little walkway back there.
Oh, good, oh, good.
But not like a walkway, like, but just, just, again, just so they can walk through it.
All right.
They'll create them naturally, it happens on every landscape job. As maintenance crews walk through the hedges and create access points, it starts to create open pathways, you see it in your own house, you know.
Okay. And the holes in the wall, I guess those look like they have metal grates in them, I think, is that?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, that's nice.
It's like a powdered aluminum, you know, fence material.
So go to the center island, I want to ask a couple of questions about that. The center island.
What about the water feature, or without the water feature?
Well, we'll do it without it for a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
So the only question that, that I had, I remember when we were doing the islands, we did some work on the front, and we had to be, we were going to put a couple of trees up there, but the problem was that the guards couldn't see out when people were coming in. It was really important for them to do that. Is there anything obstructing that, or how tall will that get?
That'll get as tall as you want it to be. I mean, you can trim it the same height you got the ones in the medians you have now.
Yeah.
Keep it about three feet, because the guard can definitely see over that, always got, I mean, I, because I went in the guard room and I was designing this, and look, and it's like, sitting there, all you gotta do is go like this, I mean...
Well, yeah, I remember that.
Or stand up and just look over.
We were going to put in those Indian things, but...
Yeah, there's nothing there to block the view, there's no trees or anything to block the view, and the water won't block the view, so that's good.
All right, and one more.
Yep.
So are we going to keep all the existing trees in the front? So nothing new at the tree level?
No, there's nothing, no, all the royal palms stay. We're not touching those, all your live oaks behind the, the guardhouse, those big live oaks all stay.
No, yeah, all right, are those new trees behind the wall, for example? Are those new trees?
These are new right here, yes.
No, the trees, the tall, the tall palm trees.
The palms, those are palms. A palm is not a tree, a tree is a tree, a palm is a palm.
I know that, yeah, right, right. So, so the palm, which is, by the way, is, I think it's a grass, I think, isn't it?
Well, palms are monocots.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're related to grass, they're monocots, like bamboo and, you know.
All right, anyway, so the palm, the palm grass, are those new? I just wanted to...
No, those are existing royal palms. These are all your existing royal palms. Those are not new, we're not touching those, those are staying. Those are staying.
Okay, all right, Arnie. Arnie, can we have somebody else speak now?
But all these trees are new.
Go ahead, Ben.
All this is new. All this is new, right here. Yeah, that's all new, yeah, the Hong Kong orchids of-
Okay, please, if you want to speak, please line up behind a microphone. Ben?
Thank you. Uh, we all, of course, want to hear the relative costs of Plan One and Plan Two, but I guess we'll get that later.
Yeah, that's later.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
Question number one, what are the materials of construction of the wall?
Concrete.
Concrete. So a, aging hopefully would not be an issue over the twenty-five years that I hope I'm still here?
What's that? Aging, what?
Aging, weathering.
Oh, it's going to have, it's like any other concrete wall, it's going to be maintained. You're going to have to clean it and paint it and stuff like that and-
The other question I had is, and if, if you could pull out to the view of both of them, option two is much more dense.
Yes, yes.
And, and my, one of my que- i- it would seem to me that option two, simply on the basis of the number of plants, is going to be a lot harder to maintain than option one. Uh, and the relative, you know, keeping that under control, what, how difficult are these two options going to be for the, our maintenance people? Is this going to add a lot to our landscaping bid?
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't add. Either one of these shouldn't add anything to your maintenance costs. If it is, then they have no idea what the hell they're doing. Bottom line.
How could it not add? It's more work.
Yeah, but it's, it's not, it's not work to like, it's not, they don't, they should not be trimming this stuff every week, or you'll just have, you'll have no blooms. This stuff should be trimmed maybe, maybe two to three times a year at the most.
Yeah. Bill, what we did is, for the audience, we took this planting plan and we reviewed it with our man six, TSM, and they, we have selected plants that are fairly easy to maintain and are not hard, uh, on the long run. So we have consulted with them, and, uh, Bill's absolutely right.
And you've already got these plants in your, in your community are ready that are being maintained the same exact way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Yeah, yeah, if they're, because if they're maintaining those, the way they're doing it, they'll just keep doing those the same way. Now, the one thing I do want them to know is, and I will probably meet with them and say, all right, guys, don't over-trim this one, because I need this one to be above the height of that one. And don't, you know, because you don't want them to become woody and leggy. Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
That was my question. How can we get, um, is it TSM?
TSM.
TSM not to cut things like the thryalis, A, in a square box, and thereby cutting off all those lovely yellow flowers?
They just have to, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's, a lot of it has to do with the way maintenance contracts are written. And for years, most maintenance contracts have written hedge trimming once every month, which is absurd. They, you do not trim hedges every month. You do not. You simply do not.
Well-
So-
Can I ask the board, um, what you think is possible not to have lollipops and square things and let the flowers flower?
Like Bill said, we will, he will sit down with TSM, and we will go over this on what the vision is, how these will be maintained.
Yeah, and they're doing a pretty good job on the median, which is the same exact relationship. The median looks pretty good. The medians aren't over-trimmed.
Rosemary.
Hi.
Yes.
Bill, thank you for your presentation.
Oh, sure.
It was really beautiful. They're both lovely options. My question is for the board. I didn't hear anything about the structural changes, the pillars, the bricks, the lighting, the gate. So is that a separate meeting?
We're taking out three of the pillars in the front, in the front, the first, you know, where your sign is, it says Tivoli Lakes?
Yeah, yeah.
You've got three pillars. Those three pillars are coming out, and they're going to, and they're going to be three Japanese blueberry trees, very formal. They light up beautifully.
But what around, what about the pillars on the sides?
They, they will be, they will remain, they will, uh, be the focal point of either the wall or the hedge as it comes around from the guardhouse on the curve. It will come and meet that first pylon, and then carry on with the hedge line along the front property.
Okay, so if we have a solid concrete wall, are we going to smooth out those pillars so that you don't have bricks and this and that?
The, uh, we're going to be looking at that. That is one of the things we, we're going to do with the monument sign, is to take off the corbel effect and make them more homogeneous. But that's, can be done with, almost like painting.
But if we're deciding between the wall and no wall, I mean, you have a, a, a feature in that wall, which is metal, so has anybody, or is it dropped? I mean, I'm not like questioning anybody, I just want to know where we're at right now, because I had shown you beautiful gates that could have connected the house so that, you know, blocked off the street, the walkway, and I don't see any of that in there. And then is there, I know we can't change out, you know, forty lamp posts, but are we doing anything with the front lighting fixtures on the building? And what color are we painting it? And are we taking those little thingies off? And like, is that another meeting?
No, it's not another meeting, but those are the details that we'll be getting into once we get the option decided. Let me finish, please, Rosemary. And we, yes, we will be putting up new, more contemporary coach lights on the gatehouse. We have an entirely new lighting system going in for the plants and, and/or wall. And we other feat, the features, the gates still have to be designed there. We decided there will not be a gate across the sidewalk. Uh, so there are some various things that we're, that we're going to be doing over the next several months, uh, but we have to get this first phase out of the way first.
Well, the only thing I was saying is, don't you think that it has to, like, work together? Like with, with other plans?
Obvi- obviously, and-
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you gotta kind of really pick your option first, and then go from there.
Any other questions on plantings?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, hi. I want to know the extent of some of the plantings.
Could you stand closer to the microphone, Fran?
Yes, of course. Microphone. Okay. Um, right now, as I look at the pictures, the royal palms have no little shrubs around them. Will we get, be getting rid of those little shrubs, which would be fine with me?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
It's very, you know, it's funny, because it's, it's very difficult to plant underneath a royal palm. Royal palms' roots are like concrete.
So, okay, so what we're seeing is a true rendition, as far as we know, as what the royal palms will have.
Yeah.
The corners, as you come into the development, okay, they will also be refurbished, as you have here?
We're keeping the Green Island ficus. It's healthy and nice. We're going to keep the rhondaletia behind it, and we're going to put in a Asiatic jasmine in here, um, the, the pinwheel jasmine, but not the original pinwheel, it's the new improved pinwheel jasmine.
Okay.
Called neti.
Lastly, I was at a meeting with you and our landscape committee a while back, and there is a big differential in just the plants versus having the wall. You explained that the wall had to be set down. Uh, will we be getting that kind of information so the rest of the community can understand that the wall is not just a, a little, a little project?
Oh, no, that wall's eighty feet wide. That wall's like eighty feet long on each side, and then you've got, it's ten feet tall there, and then it comes down, so I think it graduates down to six, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, no, it's, that wall is a statement. That wall says, hello, look at me.
Understood it's stable. I'm just saying differential money-wise between-
We'll hold off discussion of money until-
Yeah, we're not doing money.
After he's finished. Any other questions on plantings for Bill? Michael?
Yeah, question, Bill?
Yes.
You're showing on the side either the wall or the full strawberry on that. The center island, you have two different ways, one with the bubbler and one with the out. Am I correct?
Say, say it again.
The center island.
The center island in there?
Okay, you have that one with the shrubs.
That one.
That one has a fountain, the one on, the one you pointed is shrubs now.
Yep, yep.
The one on top has the fountain.
Yep. And once you crush it, I'm sorry.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Does that have to go with either or? In other words, if someone did, we decided we wanted just the shrubs, can we choose either the center island?
The survey will contain an option for the water feature. You can either say yes or no, you'd rather not have it for either option.
So you could split it either way?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, all right.
Okay.
Oh, we got one coming up here. Oh, oh, whoa.
Excuse me, why don't you let Si go first after that magnificent performance?
He fought to get up there, let him go, yeah.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
One of my concerns for a long time has been the plantings at the very end, or at the very entrance to the community. And I'm concerned about the obstruction of vision to see cars coming from the west.
All right, we'll, we'll keep the D, it's called the DOT triangle. Let me show it to you. Do an aerial view, will you, Robert, please? And either option, doesn't matter which one. So when this goes for permit, something we have to do is always keep the DOT triangle open. DOT triangle is a code thing where there's a imaginary point, like right here, that that triangle has to be wide open. So when you pull up in your car, obviously you've got open sight lines. I have to keep that open. It's required by code, it's required by DOT, it's also required by my arrows and emissions insurance.
Well, right now, it's, it's barely okay. Uh, and maybe if you don't pull all the way out, you're in a little bit trouble if you try to get into traffic. So I'm very much concerned about somebody getting out there and getting broadsided.
Oh, yeah. Well, then we, then, you know, we may want to consider bringing this down lower than, because right now, your exist, I'm not, I'm not changing the way it is right now. I'm, because I'm keeping the, um, the, the back, the back is your existing rhondaletia, so that hedge will still be there, about two and a half, three feet tall.
Let me try for question two.
Yeah.
Where, where are the walls going to be in relationship to what is supposed to have been the fountains that we had out there?
Well, your fountains are right here, same place. It's pretty much the same exact footprint almost.
Same place, okay.
Yeah, pretty much the same place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions on, go ahead, Ed?
Yes. Uh, could you show the prior slide? What are those blue squares? Oh, that's the canal.
Yeah, those are canals.
Okay. Okay, now go back to the wall.
Okay, folks, folks, please let Ed, Ed ask us a question.
Okay, so the wall is where our existing wall structure is.
Pretty much, yeah.
So that's all coming down, and this will be all-new wall?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, how much does this go underground? Three feet infrastructure?
Probably at least a two-foot, two-foot can, uh, going into the ground, below, below which, there's a two-foot by three-foot, uh, footing.
Yeah, you gotta put a footer for the load weight.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
You reminds me of Alec Baldwin.
Okay, any other questions on the plantings? We have, go ahead, please.
Uh, here we go. Yes, ma'am. Oh, here we go, you're over here, you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It looks like you really did a lot of hard work on this.
Took us an hour.
Okay, so, inste- I, I like, I like the plantings with the wall. Is there any way that you could put other plantings there besides the wall, the way you did it with the other rendition?
Okay, I think, is your question, could there be more plantings on the wall option?
Instead of the wall. In other words, I like the way this looks.
You like it with only two layers. It just depends, I mean, it depends on what you want to be the star. If you want the wall to be the star, then the wall has to be able to be seen.
Okay, the plant, the plantings are totally different, okay? I personally, I don't know about anybody else, I prefer the rendition with the wall, with the plantings that you have there. So my question is, could you do those plantings without the wall, but do it the way that you did the other rendition?
I don't, I don't, I mean, it, it's going to look very weak.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the county may say no, because the county's going to want a statement. They're going to want bulk.
All right.
You know, they want, they want, they want, they want a statement, you know? Um, but, um, but yeah, we could all, I mean, you can do a mixed match of the two.
We, we spent a lot of time on this. There, there were multiple meetings, the landscape committee was involved. These were the plantings that the landscape architect has come up with. These are the options that we have. There's not going to be mixing and matching. These are what we're presenting to the community.
It was just a question, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, a couple of things.
Yep.
In reference to the concrete walls, um, are they go, and what kind of a surface is it going to have? Is it going to be textured? Is it going to be flat?
Right now, it's, right now, it's just a, a, a white concrete wall. And then, you know, depending on which option you pick, if you pick the wall, then we can look at different veneers that can go on it, or different, you know, textures or different elements if, if need be, you know, once you get in. But, you know, you gotta, if you're not going to go for the wall, there's no point in exploring options on the wall if you're not going to do the wall.
Well, I understand that, but-
The intent right now, ma'am, is to put a stucco finish on the, the wall that will match the guardhouse structure. So that it's homogeneous from one end to the other. And whether or not we painted a slightly lighter color, it would encompass the entire facade from one end to the other, which is what we're trying to achieve, which is the visual impact of a nice entrance to Tivoli Lakes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Don, but my question, I have another question about the wall.
Don mentioned it earlier. You guys do have one of the most beautiful, I've been doing this for 40 years, I've had this company for 25 years, I've worked on almost every entrance between GL Homes, Toll Brothers, Lennar, everybody. And you guys do have a beautiful guardhouse. Your guardhouse is really nice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, in turn, in reference to maintaining that concrete wall?
Yep.
We all know that things get stained, and then they start to run down. We see that even in our own homes with the little walls in front. How, what would be the maintenance to address that particular issue?
Just stay on top of it.
Andrea?
Pressure clean it, wash it, paint it every once in a while.
I'm gonna be addressing that later on.
Okay.
How we're gonna maintain everything.
Oh, okay. And then the, also, the fountain, the little fountain, can you give us an idea as to the dimension of it? All we see is this little square.
It's like probably four by eight, somewhere around there.
What was that?
Like four by eight, somewhere around there.
Four by eight, okay.
It's a small little water feature.
And is it, is it going to be the, the surface of it, the floor of it, so to speak? Is it gonna be tile?
It could be.
Okay.
We didn't specify, we didn't specify details like that, you know? Like you don't pick your faucet for your bathroom until you pick, you know, you know, the construction of the house, you know?
Thank you for that. It's good for me to know. And could you give us an idea about the uplighting that was mentioned? What you, in terms of...
Yeah, it's all, all brand new uplighting for the Royal Palms and the new landscaping and the wall. So yeah, these will, they won't be the runway lights you have now, those massive, huge, these are gonna be more, the new generation LED, low voltage stuff that...
Okay.
These light fixtures were only about this big.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they're amazing.
That's much better, thank you.
No problem, yeah. Yes.
Okay, the slide without the wall, to create the different tiers, is there gonna be a dirt berm that you're gonna put in there, or is it just gonna be?
We're gonna, as of right now, the goal is to use the natural rise you have. Because it's bermed up anyway, you've got a berm there now. When they built, when they built those fountains, they bermed it. So, what I'm trying to do to make it cost effective and practical, I just stayed with your same berm, and so I just kept it the way it is. So it, there's a natural, you've got a rise of about six feet from about here to the top of the berm. Depends on where you are. If you're back there, it's even, it's like 20 feet, it's huge. But in the front, it's only about six feet. So you, you go, you know, so every, you know, probably about every four feet, you probably go up a foot, probably a four to one grade ratio. Those grading is four to one, so, probably is, yes.
If they decide to get the water feature?
Uh-huh.
How's the water get into that pump? Where does it come from, and does it have, do you have to take the street up in order to put the new pipe in?
Laurel, the water supply and the utilities come from existing sources. There's a water supply that goes to the guardhouse now. There's probably a one inch water line that would have to be extended out to that area. We still have to work on that, but we have to bring a small electric line and a small water line out there. It has a solenoid valve on it. But, once again, that's only if you choose that option will we, will we continue to design for it.
So what you're saying is you wouldn't dig up the street in order to lay anything down?
We might have to.
Oh, you might have, okay.
It'll take about a day.
You don't know until you know, because we haven't looked at your electrical, what your panel can handle in that building, but if you need to upgrade it, you may have to. But, that's easy.
Okay.
It's easy to do. Cut asphalt, lay a line, patch it back, it's done in one day.
Okay, I think we're at the, at the end of the discussion on the plantings. Are there any other discussion for Bill before he leaves? Okay? As I said, his drawings will be on display in the back of this room after this meeting, and then tomorrow they'll be in the great room. And we'll have them on the website as well, for you to go through.
All right. No problem. All right. Oh yeah, my jacket. I cannot forget that jacket, it's the last thing my grandmother gave me. I've had the jacket since 1984. He usually gets rid of it. Call me, call me if you need me.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I think Bill gave a good presentation on the two options, described the plantings very well, and tied them in his conversation back to what we currently have in the median, which is what the residents seem to like. Rest of the discussion will be more on the procedural and technical issues, and then you can ask questions of any of the board members, and tell us what you think of the entire evening and the presentation. Before we open this up, based on recent comments, there are several points that I would like to review that I hope will answer most of the questions before we open this up. First, why are we not using the existing fountain structures? The dissatisfaction with the front entrance goes back to 2005, when the developer provided a water feature that did not match the original rendering, did not perform as expected, and despite ongoing repairs, continued maintenance and several renovations, failed to operate as expected. In September of 2022, the equipment again failed, and with parts unavailable and the structure in need of further repair, as well as residents making derogatory comments about its appearance, even when working to the extent it did, the board decided to tackle the issue. You can say again, but we took a fresh look at it. Based on all of this and comments from design professionals in the community, we decided at the very start that the Band-Aid approach was not a long-term solution, and that the existing structures were not to be part of any final design, and therefore had to be The second recent comment was how we are proceeding with the administrative process of this project. In an opinion from our general counsel, the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions, Article 5, Section 4, provides that the board has the authority to levy special assessments and to expend funds in excess of $50,000 for the replacement of any community asset without an owner vote on such a special assessment and expenditure of funds. Robert will display the actual opinion from our general counsel on the screen, and it'll take a few minutes, and you can read it. The most important, the most important part is contained in the last paragraph. Now I'll just wait for you, if you can, can you all read that?
No.
No, okay.
Can you?
Yes, this'll be on the quiz as well. I'll read that, the last paragraph. Article 5, Section 4 of the Declaration as amended by the membership, provides that the board has the authority to levy special assessments and expend funds in excess of $50,000 for the replacement of any existing community asset without an owner vote on such a special assessment and expenditure of funds. So this is what we're relying on in going forward on this project, and should answer your question about community involvement and a vote. While a formal vote is not required, the board will be asking the community in its survey to provide their opinion on the several options, so the board may make an informed decision. Since the board is responsible for the upkeep of a, of the community, a selection of none of the above, and keeping the front entrance in disrepair, is not an option. So the, the survey will contain, would you prefer one or two? Third item that was discussed recently, depending on which option is selected, to varying extents, it is anticipated that the Palm Beach County Planning and Zoning, Utilities, Building Department, Environmental Review, Lake Worth Drainage District, South Florida Water District, and possibly Cobra, may be part of the approval process. Until final plans are completed and submitted, the exact permitting process is undefined, and we will address each as necessary. And of course, all of that depends on which option the board decides to go with. Fourth, all of the wall, if selected, will be on land owned by the HOA, in particular within the right-of-way of Tivoli Lakes Boulevard, the parallel landscape easement on Rec Parcel 1, Rec Parcel 2, and Tract B1. Plantings on the median strip of land in front of our development, owned by Lake Worth Water District, Drainage District, will be totally within the existing curbing, and consist of replacement of plants, as we have always done, and cosmetic changes to the monument sign, removing the pineapples, some of the styrofoam accents, and updating the script. Robert will show a slide of that, because it hasn't been shown before. This is very similar to our existing sign, but we've taken off the pineapples, we've removed some of the styrofoam, and we've kept the script, but made it a little bit more stylish and more modern, which we think is more in keeping with what we're looking for. Thank you. Special assessment. Are any of you interested? Over the past year, the board paid PLA to assist in the design of the hardscape, and botanical visions to do a planting plan. Using these drawings, we solicited estimated costs from general contractors, landscape contractors, and lighting specialists, and demolition specialists as well. These estimates, as well as soft costs, will be the responsibility of the HOA, and these soft costs, costs consist of design, engineering, utility connections, legal, permitting, and include a contingency as well. And all of these numbers have been compiled to arrive at a total expenditure for each of the options, to be funded with a special assessment. Now if you want to get out a little pencil and paper, you can write this down, but this is what the special assessments for each one will be. The special assessment of the wall option with plantings is $535,000, or about $1,650 per home. The special assessment of the landscaping option without the wall is about $404,000, or about $1,250 per home. Not a substantial difference, but there's a difference in impact as visually as you look at the two. The special assessment of this optional water feature is $81,000, or about $250 a home. That can be added to either of those two options, if you indicate that.
Is $81,000 that's worth or right?
That is correct.
Right.
Continue, please. Before we open this for discussion, some observations for some other board, from some other board members. Go ahead, Howard?
Okay, so, one of the two front entrance design options, as we've talked about, is a landscape-only option, without a wall or any other hardscape. It would consist of the colorful planting, shrubs and trees, and is similar in concept to the landscaping that is currently in the median on Tivoli Lakes Boulevard. Many visitors and prospective buyers comment on the attractiveness of our median. A front entrance design implemented in a similar manner would provide a favorable first impression of our community at a lower cost than a design that includes hardscape. Another advantage of this choice would be that it may have a shorter county approval period due to the structural review, due to no structural review.
Obviously they save the best for last.
I'm coming after you.
Yeah. I, I think your dog needs to go out, I think you need to. I'm gonna start out with a couple questions, seriously. Robert, would you put up the non-wall option? Isn't Bill a hoot? He's a character, I'm telling you. Working with this guy, this guy was unbelievable. Seriously, raise your hands, how many people think that that front entrance is really gonna look like all of that in full bloom? How many of you really feel that the final result is gonna look as beautiful as this drawing when it's all done? You really feel that everything there is gonna be in full bloom all the time? I told you they were smart, you kept telling me they weren't. It isn't, it just, it isn't. You know, Bill talked about how some of these trees are in bloom for, you know, six months at a time. Really isn't true. I mean, that's his job, he sells landscaping. You can see on our median, the Hong Kong orchids are in bloom for a couple of months, and the yellow trees for a couple of months. There's always something in bloom, but when they're not in bloom, our concern is, it's gonna look like trees. It's gonna be green and brown trunks, with some color here now. Now, some of the ground cover will be in bloom all the time. The, the copper leaf will look red all the time. But all of that mixture of trees back there, it's gonna look green. And that's why the board felt very strongly and spent so much time on the design for this wall. Because with the wall, you always have a structure there that draws your vision to our wonderful gatehouse. It, it really is important with, when, when the landscape-only option is up there, I'm not so sure it's gonna draw your attention to our gatehouse. It's gonna be trees, some in bloom, some not in bloom, and some plants. This automatically draws your vision in. It's not a plain wall. We purposely broke it up with the grates, we purposely brought it from a lower height to an upper height. It probably will have a cap, this doesn't show a cap, but I, I think we were planning on a cap, yeah. So it's gonna be a lot more interesting than this drawing. You gotta understand, Bill did really want this wall. He's a landscaper, okay? He does soft landscaping. He'll build it for us, but that's not his, his niche, okay? I think it's, all of us really think it's much more important to have that wall along with landscaping than just landscaping. You're talking about a... You're talking about a $400 difference, which is not chicken feed, but if you don't build this wall, and a year from now, you're driving in this community and you're seeing trees, you're gonna be sorry. With that wall, you'll always have something that draws your attention to our gatehouse. I really, I'm gonna stop for a second, I, you know, I don't think, I don't think...
Please, let Jay finish.
I don't think all of you appreciate how much of an advantage we have with Don being on this board. His engineering background, his engineering background saves us so much money. He's able to talk to the land planners and, and people that normally, a community like ours would have to hire someone to manage this. We get it for free. And, well, no, you do have a salary, I think. He's put hundreds of hours into this landscape design, especially the wall, trips down to Boca several times a month, talking to PLA, five o'clock in the morning, sending emails out, and I know because I'm answering them at five o'clock in the morning. It really makes a difference to have that, that wall as part of this project. For some of you, $400 is $400, we get that. For most of us, really not. I think you'll be sorry if you don't spend it. I, I'll tell you a story. A wife says to her husband, "We need a fridge for the garage." He says, "No problem, I'll get one." I'll go to, to Brandsmart, they're having a sale. Gets there and the salesman says, "You wanna save a hundred bucks?" "Sure, why not?" "We have leftover an olive green refrigerator." Brand new, in the box. We just lost it, we never, we forgot it was there. Good deal. Comes home, tells his wife, "We got a great bargain, you wait." They deliver it, they set it up, she walks out of the house and looks at that fridge. What do you think he thinks about that hundred dollars he just saved? Don't make the mistake for $400, and go with the cheap version, you're gonna be sorry. It just will not draw the attention to our gatehouse. It really won't. There's no question, we're being very upfront with everybody, there is a maintenance issue with a wall that you don't have with the landscaping. There is less landscaping, so we do, may save a little there. Wall probably will have to be pressure washed once a year. No, it, it, the algae that builds up, because it's facing north, once a year should do it. It'll get painted when the rest of our facility gets painted. So there is some upkeep on it. It really will be minimal, it'll fall into the budget. I, I think that pretty much, ti, oh, timing, yes. Okay, important. Yes, it's gonna take longer to do the wall approach than a landscaping approach. We've got the county to deal with, there are footers that have to be dug. You know, with the winds we get in Florida, you need almost as much concrete underground as you do above ground to support this wall. It's a curved wall, so that gives it some strength. But, there's, there's definitely more time involved. involved. You know, okay, question, raise of hands. How many in the community, there's a hand already. How many in the community have done a major project in their house since they moved in? Okay. It was a pain in the ass that you went through, right? But it was worth it at the end. This is going to take a little longer with the wall. It'll be worth it in the end, I promise you. Anything else on that? I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up for questions. Go ahead, and please come up to the microphone.
Don, I have a...
You're too late, Ed. Go ahead.
I'm first. I have a question about the assessment and what it includes. We just saw a presentation on the plantings and with the wall and whatever. What about any other work? For example, the electrical lights, is that all inclusive with this assessment? Or would there be another cost to us for those kinds of things?
As I said in the section on special assessment, the special assessment not only includes the plants, the lighting, the irrigation system, but also the soft costs, which are the permits, electrical, plumbing, engineering, architectural, et cetera. And just like this building, when we did this estimate, we had a construction contractor give us one price. We had a long list of items that were the HOA responsibility that the contractor was not going to cover. So yes, we believe...
So that's all been taken into account?
Yes, it has.
Great, thank you.
Ed?
This may be a question more for Robert. Over my years here and talking to Robert about constant problems with water and water features, breakdown, maintenance, bring somebody in, going out, talked about floating fountains on the lakes, cost too much because of ongoing maintenance. Why even consider water feature, given our experience that it breaks down so frequently?
Okay, I can answer that one, Ed. In the very beginning of this, two years ago, I forget exactly who it was, you can raise your hand if it was yourself, no moving parts. Anyone here was the author of that one? Somebody actually said that. And we've taken that to heart. We've also had a number of people that say this community should have a magnificent water feature in the front, because they feel it's deserved by this community. We went to, when PLA came up with our concepts, we got it both ways. We got one with just plantings and we got one with tiered pools flowing into each other. Well, that one was discarded right away. We decided that we would offer one option for a small water feature that would be manageable. I use the word manageable loosely, but yes, you're absolutely right. There's a great reluctance to putting in anything with moving parts.
Okay, thank you.
But that'll be up to you to provide feedback to the board.
Based on what I heard this evening, if the community would choose option two without the wall, is the board going to go with that? Or based on what I'm hearing, the board really wants the wall. Will you make the decision to go with the wall regardless of what the community might vote?
That's the $64,000 question. I don't think we can go one way or the other right now. I think we'd have to see which way the community responds in the survey, then we will discuss it, and it'll be an open discussion. So I don't know the answer to that yet. We'll have to wait and see.
I have a second follow-up question.
Go ahead.
And that is...
Wait a minute. Howard, go ahead.
Now, I don't know how the rest of the board is going to vote, and that's up to them, but in my opinion, the survey will, I mean, unless it's very, very close, if there's clearly one way or the other, I am going to vote for whatever the community votes for. Period.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up to the other board members. They may not agree with me, but that's, I will pledge that to you right now.
Okay, thank you. My follow-up question is, just trying to be transparent to all residents. I understand that there is a potential for additional assessments besides this project. You have another one that is out there that could be a potential cost in addition to the landscaping in the front?
Yes. The answer to that is yes, we have one special assessment coming up that we know of for additional pickleball courts, and we've set a time schedule for that within the near future, and we will be, same way we're doing it tonight, we will let you know what the special assessment will be for that project, and you can factor the, both in your, into your pocketbook.
Okay, and I guess that's the point here tonight. We're making decisions.
That, the, the procedure for that assessment will be different than this in that the new pickleball courts will be a capital improvement and will need a vote of the community to go forward.
Okay. Are you anticipating additional assessments besides these two?
Over what period of time? We never say never.
Six months.
Six months? No.
It would just be these two?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ben?
First of all, I'd just like to commend this board. It's hard enough to run a community, and the amount of work, the amount of time and energy that this, this is not committee work, or pardon me, it really is committee work, but the board's been doing it, and I think we should thank the members of the board for the amount of energy they put into this. But I do have a question. Do these costs include recouping, if that's the proper word, of those monies that have already been spent on this project? Or is that from this moment on?
They include the monies that we have already spent with PLA on the conceptual hardscape and the money we have paid to Botanical Visions for the specific planting plan, both of which we've used to go out to other contractors to obtain estimates of cost, which were factored into the special assessment.
And the money we've paid to Bill to get to this point?
Yes.
So it is? Thank you very much.
I promise it's my last question.
Rosemary? Nope.
No. When we talk...
The guy that hit me in the car didn't see me either, so...
No.
Question. The wall...
Go right ahead.
The wall that you are talking about, is that no option? Is that the wall? Because I'm not, that wall doesn't really excite me.
Okay, that's your preference?
I'm just saying my preference.
We have two options. One is with the wall and the plantings, the second one being the, just plantings...
Let me ref...
Taking, let me finish. Taking the place of the concrete wall. You have to choose one or the other. There is no choice for none of the above.
All right, I get you. I said it wrong, all right? The shape of the wall, the design in the wall is, are there any options on that?
No. What we've done is we have gone out to a number of landscape architects. We've received sketches and ideas from all of them. We have refined that down to this one particular design, which we think is practical and accomplishes our goal of expanding the visual impact of our main gatehouse.
All right, thank you for your efforts.
Okay, Rosemary.
Hi, can you go back to the cost slide, please? I want to just, okay, so my question is, and I know that we're not making any changes, but I know we had sort of played around with maybe just a sculpture where the water feature is. And I, I mean, I know artists in Orlando that are doing it for every community in the country that could give you a statue, a gorgeous sculpture for $20,000, which would save money, and then you wouldn't have to do the, you know, the pool. And it's just a thought, and it would look classy, and it wouldn't look common, and it wouldn't look small, and it wouldn't look, you know, it would look important, and it would differentiate our community. So it's just a thought.
This was an idea that Rosemary brought to us at the beginning of the project. We did a lot of research on what the, what an alternate to a quote fountain would be, and we came up with any number of sculptures, most of which were left to various interpretations. And we decided that rather than go to Chagall or Miro or, you know, something that could lead to other comments, like an inkblot test, whatever, we decided to go more with a traditional fountain, fairly minor, fairly easy to build, and would be attractive. So, yeah, I do appreciate it, and we did consider something different. Let's continue the conversation. Yes?
Yes.
Howard?
Question and an observation. Question, about a year ago, somebody asked about a flag, possibly putting a flag up. I don't, was that discussed, putting a flag up?
Probably would not be practical in front of the, in the front entrance, maybe more practical in the front of the community clubhouse, but it has not been discussed any more than that.
Okay, now, the thing about the wall, I like a wall, but to me, you're going to, it could be an invite for vandalism and graffiti. All right.
I don't know what to say to that.
No, I'm just, I know white walls. I know what happens with white walls.
Michael?
I'm pretty sure you said everything's included.
Okay, please, please let Michael speak.
It's an either project. I'm just confirming the cost includes the demolition of the fountain?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and the, standing alone, I forgot when my second question was going to be. Let me answer, if I can get it back.
We'll get back to you, Mike. Ophelia? I'm sorry. Laurel, switch sides.
Could you explain to me why you all decided against gates over the sidewalk? Don't you think it invites public to come through whenever they want?
Go ahead, Sharon? Go ahead.
The, it was determined that the gates wouldn't be that much of a deterrent. If somebody wanted to get in, they could go under the barriers right now. People do ride their bikes, and it's difficult for them, but yeah, we took it into consideration, but...
Yes, but a gate, a gate is the deterrent. The gate is the deterrent. Yes, they can go over it or under it, but it's a deterrent.
Our, we spoke to our security people. They didn't necessarily feel this...
Oh, your security people? Said no?
We, we...
I didn't know we had security people, that's all, I'm sorry.
The gate, the security at the gatehouse. And we have cameras.
I thought maybe you were talking about a security committee here with residents. No? Just the guard at the gate decided that?
No, not just, it was, we got different opinions, and it was decided not to use the gate.
Okay.
The security has been, we've looked at this a number of times before, and one of the things that the police and different contractors have, even fence contractors have brought up to us, if you look up on the screen, this is where you would put the, this is where you would put the gate, and it's not inexpensive. And the gate contractor said, you know, if somebody wants to get in to do something bad in the community, they're not going to come to the gate and say, "Well, I can't get in." They're going to duck under this barrier arm that's six feet over and just walk right into the community. It's right there. You're putting up this, this gate to keep somebody out they can't climb over it. They're just going to zip under that barrier arm, because we don't have gates back here. So...
Okay, Ophelia?
I love our medium. I love the urns with the beautiful flowers, and we have colors all year. It's beautiful. All my guests have to make a comment of how beautiful it is. I noticed that you eliminated the two urns that are in front of the gate. Have you considered leaving them?
That was part of the recommendation from Bill Reeve, was to remove those two urns and to make it a more homogeneous planting in there. We've had certain problems with the urns, and they're a high-maintenance item, and we thought that at least in front of the gatehouse, we would not keep them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
First of all, I commend you for the presentation and all the work that you've done, and I want to thank you. Secondly, have you made any provisions for cost overruns in case it comes in more expensive or in case something unforeseen?
Unforeseen, interesting choice of word. Just like this clubhouse, we had a special assessment, and in that we had built in contingencies and other items for the unforeseen. We did run into it during the construction of the clubhouse, and we used the contingency. We still ended up under budget. The estimate that we came up with to determine the special assessment also contains estimate, fairly generous estimates for various items and contingencies as well. We obviously never expect to have to go back to the community for another assessment. We feel that what we're proposing is adequate to do the job.
I was just thinking of prices today compared to when this is going to be completed might be a little different.
We've put in contingencies and inflation.
Thank you.
Because we absolutely know what inflation's going to be. Michael? Maybe you know what inflation's going to be.
3.8.
3.8. We got him on that.
The question I had was, if I'm correct, when you hired Bill, there was a clause in there that if we used him, we would get back like, was it $20,000, $25,000 on the planning project? If I'm, in other words, when you hired him...
Yes, the contract with Botanical Visions contained a design fee of $42,000. However, if we chose him to do the planting of the either option, that he would reduce that design fee down to $21,000. So that's the number that we have in the budget.
Okay, and just an answer to the last lady. The other day, I happened to be walking back, and I went through the side, and the guard actually came running out of the clubhouse to see who I was. He knew who I was, but he saw me going through, so they, he did pay attention to that.
And he still let you in?
The only thing I could suggest possibly is put a camera over there in the clubhouse.
Okay, try to wrap this up. Go ahead, Steve? I'm sorry.
So here's a question. The other day I was here, when the pickleball people were here, it's very clear that they want to have a special assessment for pickleball. I'm going to guess that two additional pickleball courts are going to run approximately $200,000 more or less. So we're looking at probably in round numbers, you know, government numbers, probably about another $1,000 or so for, per home for pickleball. So, Don?
Please let him, let him finish.
I could be off on those numbers. So are we looking at an approximate assessment of $2,500 between now and the end of the year?
We're going to have hearings on the pickleball project in the near future. Stay tuned, and we will have... Stay tuned, and we will have a special assessment figure for you at that time. Just, we've already discussed it, that's not the topic for tonight, but there, as someone mentioned, there is going to be another special assessment for pickleball.
So last question. Given all of the permits that you have to get, can you do a wild guess on when you'd be able to actually start this project?
It, once again, as I said, it depends on the option chosen. For the wall option, it will be a longer period of time to go through the permitting process with the county. If it's just plant, just plantings, both, both have demolition, but if it's just plantings, it probably would not be that long. But it will take most of the year by the time we're done with this, either way. Yes?
First of all, thank you for all the hard work that you guys have put in, because I know something like this takes a great deal of work. I'm not going to give an opinion as far as whether I want the wall or not the wall. What I am going to say is, the median strips that we have from past the guardhouse up are magnificent. They're natural, the plants are lovely, there's always something with color, and they're trimmed beautifully. Maybe they need a little roundness instead of flat, but they're, they have done such a phenomenal job on those medians, and I can't see why they wouldn't do the same thing outside the guardhouse. They'll care for those plants the way, the same way they do the ones within the community. So that's my opinion.[1620.04][1620.04][applause]
Whichever option is chosen, the care and the maintenance of the plantings will be equal to that of the median. So, yes, Steve?
Thanks to the board and Robert for all your hard work. I'm still confused about one thing. Are we going to get the results of the survey sent back to us?
The results of the survey will be discussed at our meeting on February 26th. So that'll be, that'll
But will we be getting the results as a
At that meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Soshi?
We'd been talking also about replacing grass. I was wondering if you could give us a timeframe for that, too, because I'm expecting that that's also going to be a special assessment.
It's not on the radar right now for a special assessment. It's an ongoing maintenance item that we've included in the 2024 budget, and will include in the 2025 budget, I expect, and it's taking care of the worst parts of the mosaic problem in a piecemeal manner. There is no anticipation right now for a general special assessment for that. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I don't see any more questions coming up. Jerry?
So, so what's next? Just so you all know, within the next day or two, you will each be receiving a survey. Please fill out the survey and submit it. You will also be able to link from the survey to see the diagrams on the website, and Robert, as we speak, is putting up on boards in the back of the room, diagrams right now, so you can spend some time looking at them now. But again, please, please, complete the survey. The survey is per resident, not per home. Everybody who receives emails will get the survey. You can only vote once, but everybody can fill out the survey, every resident.
Since we have 324 homes, we have about 500 to 600 residents in our database for emails. All of you should be receiving that, and any, you can all respond, it goes electronically to our management office. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.[1795.12][1795.12][applause]